I can see Carly.
Oh, is that open?
So if I'm late, mine comes off.
It was pretty cool.
We, uh...
We're gonna go through.
The very end of... Let's start with the first one. The Board of Education Committee of the Whole to meeting, uh, the Committee of the Whole meeting to order at 5:30 PM on this June 9, 2025, on a beautiful day. So we have a roll call, please.
Roll call, please. Oh, excuse me. Is it on?
There's not a green light.
You're on. Can you hear us? Brad Suss, yes.
Just one second.
Beaton?
Here.
Becker?
Here.
Fortress?
Present.
Fox?
Here.
LaFron Boys?
Here.
Rete?
Here.
Pinton?
Here.
Let's see. Approval of the agenda is next, so I need a...
I move the Board of Education approve the agenda with adjustment to personnel. Item one, potential personnel as a discussion item, not an action item.
Is there a second?
Support. It can't be just a discussion, it needs to be an action item.
We need an action item.
There's a deadline.
I'm just getting this today in five minutes.
We're gonna discuss.
I know, but five minutes to look at it is not adequate time.
I actually sent out a memo on Friday, and we need to determine whether or not you want to do action today. I would ask that the board consider making that decision after closed session.
I just don't think five minutes to look at this is adequate time. We should have gotten this in our board packet last Friday.
We did.
We did.
This was not in my board packet.
What do you... What do you... That must be something different, then.
Is this what we're discussing as?
No.
Okay. All right. I make a motion to approve the... I amend my motion and make a motion to approve the agenda as written.
Support. May I ask for an amendment of that agenda? Before you were here, Heidi, I asked if we could add bleacher inspection to B six.
To add what?
Bleacher inspection to B six.
I make a mo... I make a motion to amend my motion.
Because I wanted to know one more about a discussion of junior Vikings. I'm not sure if we have to go under other.
It would probably be B seven or D eight, perhaps?
I think it would be other.
For junior Vikings?
Yeah.
Would it be other?
No, no.
Correct?
I think so. Whoever the board would like it.
D eight, junior Vikings. So we're gonna do this under B for junior?
Yeah, and I apologize. In a conversation today over some safety concerns, I asked for him to get an inspection report, and he got me to quote.
And where are we putting junior Vikings?
Um, did you... You said E, right?
Uh, D under other.
Oh, D.
Eight.
Oh, eight, okay.
Sorry.
Okay.
Or no, it sounds like D eight.
It's confusing.
Okay.
Yeah.
I make a motion to agen... Adjust the agenda to add item B six bleachers inspections and item D eight junior Vikings to the agenda as written. Support again.
All right. Motion by Heidi and supported by Debbie with several agenda amendments, adding bleachers and junior Vikings. All in favor? Or no? Roll call.
Fortress?
Yes.
LaFron Boys?
Yes.
Beaton?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
Rete?
Yes.
Pinton?
Yes.
So we're up to public comment. Anybody wishing to speak? I don't have any papers here. Okay, then we need a motion to close session.
Make a motion to recess to close session under 81H to consider matters exempt from disclosure by state and federal statute.
Support. Okay. A motion by Heidi and support by Debbie to go into closed session under 81H. Is there any discussion?
This question, are we motioning for both of these being done, or we...
No, one at a time.
One at a time.
I just wanted to make sure.
Good question. Okay. Roll call. Fortress?
Yes.
LaFron Boys?
Yes.
Beaton?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
Rete?
Yes.
Pinton?
Yes.
We'd like to ask if Jamie can come in and take notes for us during this session. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Some of the tables broke. These are pretty broken.
Yeah.
World.
Monica.
We're good.
Ready?
Need a motion to call the meeting back to order coming out of closed session?
I make a motion to return to open session.
Yes, adjourned.
Adjourn to open session.
Motion made by Heidi and second by Monica to reopen the meeting. Roll call please.
Porters?
Yes.
Routine?
Yes.
Beaton?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
Leframbois?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Okay, I need a motion to go back into closed session.
I will motion to recess into closed session under section 818, consider the dismissal, suspension or disciplining of or to hear complaints or charge as brought against or to consider a periodic personnel evaluation of a public officer, employee, staff member or individual agent if the named individual requests a closed hearing. An individual requesting a closed hearing may rescind the request at any time, in which case the matter is issue must be considered after the recession, only in open sessions.
Support.
Motion by April to go into closed session under 81A and supported by...
Heidi. Yep.
Roll call.
Beaton?
Yes.
Porters?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
Leframbois?
Yes.
Routine?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
I'm going to... Please shake those money amongst yourselves. I was reading...
Your dad walked down.
Even then I wasn't speaking.
I was just...
Yes.
Oh my gosh.
You're fine.
You're left, I just do it to Debbie. She's like, I'm like, I'm right here. I can move down because she's on the side of the table.
Yeah.
Actually, we do. I'm right here.
Feel good? There's no spork in that. So thank you.
Oh, on your watch, okay. I might have another pair of my glasses.
Oh, I can, I, it's just my watch is too small.
I got a two.
I know. I had one, I had the other ones. I had the other one. I have a lot right now. I know that or. Yeah.
The morning.
Well, as long as I'm not reading, I don't need a board.
Oh, no, I can see my own board.
Yeah.
I tried to go through this. I got more. I gave that all to them.
Sure.
No, it's.
That's why I'm sure they got, I know.
Here is John, did they got your?
Who has it? Who has it? Right, it's me, sure.
Oh, I just love.
She has it, he has it right here. Darren has it right.
All the resolutions?
That's it.
Oh, yeah, that's, that's, no, that is the, that is the motion. Board resolution motion is the same, motion and resolution is interchangeable.
He's got it.
That's right. Yeah, this one right here.
So what do I?
Board resolution begins.
So I just scroll, okay, the whole thing?
Oh, okay.
You know, I don't like that. He's giving it to us. That's her first. He's still got.
Need a motion to reopen the meeting.
Motion to reopen the meeting.
Support. Motion by Monica is supported by April to reopen the meeting. Roll call, please.
Rattie? Yes.
Behe?
Yeah, yes, sorry, I'm so sorry, yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Fortress?
Yes.
Thack?
Yes.
Lepronways?
Yes.
Goodson?
Yes.
We are going to need the resolution.
All right, so the resolution for what we were in for executive session. Board Resolution of Nonrenewal of Contract, A Meeting of the Board of Education of the City of Hazel Park, School District, Oakland County, Michigan School District, from here on forth, was held in the school district on the ninth day of June 2025 at 5:30 PM. The following preamble and resolution were offered by, I have a blank spell.
Oh, that's the first trustee and supported by second, who called the motion?
I'm, was just, no one did yet.
So I think I need a motion first.
Yeah, I think you do.
So I need the Board of Education to approve the nonrenewal employment for the employee as presented.
Someone needs a second.
I have second.
Oh, we want that, okay, I'm sorry.
Sorry, I should have not read the resolution until after we had the motion. So now we have a motion on the floor.
We were told that was the motion, so.
Oh.
And now I don't have what she just read.
It's written on our packet.
Potential personnel action, is that what you read? I don't get where, okay. Motion by Monica, second by April, correct?
Nate.
Nate, oh, sorry. For nonrenewal of employment of an employee as presented. Any discussion? Now, do we vote and then read the resolution?
We vote and then we read, yes.
Do we vote and then read the resolution?
No, you actually, no, you actually put the motion on, you have to read the motion first. There's where it asks and what you're, what you're proposing.
So now you're reading the resolution.
Okay, I will continue reading. The following preamble and resolution were offered by trustee Rattie and supported by trustee Baker. Whereas the administration has recommended that the probationary employment contract of Tina Larcy, a school social worker, not of Tina Verlasse, a school social worker, not be renewed to the fact that her actions have been problematic and that her services have been found not to be effective. And whereas the board has reviewed the superintendent's memorandum and related materials upon which the administration relies and has consideration, considered the statements of the Ms. Verlasse, if any. Now, therefore, it is resolved that the services of Tina Verlasse are found not to be effective to base upon the finding that Ms. Verlasse's services have been not found to be effective as well as upon the fact of her problematic, problematic actions as related by the superintendent. The employment contract of Tina Verlasse shall be discontinued as of the current 2024-25 school year. The board secretary with the assistance of the superintendent or her designate is directed to provide Ms. Verlasse on or before June 15, 2025, a written statement setting forth the provisions of this board resolution that her services will be discontinued as of the end of the 2024-25 school year and that her probationary employment contract shall not be renewed. Now we can have the vote.
Okay. Your comments, Rattie?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Beaton?
Yes.
Fortress?
Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
LaFramboise?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I'm second.
Yes.
Tinton?
No.
So six yes?
Motion carries. Yes, motion carries six to one. Next thing on the agenda is potential personnel action.
No, that was it.
Sorry. Administrative moves.
Are you ready for a discussion? May I? Go ahead. Okay, so as we've returned and we still are awaiting, we'll talk about the budget in a little bit, we as an administration in the fall, before I left, started making changes and not replacing positions concerned about finding out where the end of the year budget would be. And we have always said that we needed to make changes for the 25-26 school year. Given that staffing and such has been an out, we are looking for ways, as I've returned, to consolidate costs for the school district. And so this administrative team moves to remove the K-12 supervisor position. Not that it's not needed, but it's one of the furthest ones away from students. And in the midst of that, George will be the high school principal. Mrs. Beach will move to the assistant principal. And then Dr. Kaminsky would move to the junior high. Everyone's very excited, actually, given the fact that Dr. Kaminsky's been working with the schedule all year long and working very closely with the staff there. And Mrs. Beach feels like that's a great move. We were looking for a strong instructional leader and we know that her background of reading specialist and coach and her instructional piece to the high school will be an added positive move. We did this move because when we removed the K-12 supervisor, we have to have a position for her to go in because her contract was approved for two years. So, and she is under those guidelines as a certified administrator. The total cost savings is $106,000. That's just salary. That's not benefits and medical and all of that. And so this is the first move that we have made since I've been back to do some extra reduction that will show up in the 25-26 budget year. Questions?
I love that we can keep money.
What was that?
Said, I love that we can save money.
That's what we're doing. We're making sure we can keep it as far away from kids as possible.
So why isn't George's salary the same as Ms. McHenry's going salary?
Because it's the next year's salary for the contract. So her salary, oh, and she also has longevity that's in that contract. And that's in there as well. So that does not include his longevity. He may in fact have longevity that go in there as well. That's straight salary off of the contract.
He's a different step than him.
Yeah, but that's, that's straight off the contract.
Yes.
So is this new salary that Fernbry that he's been getting or is it?
Yeah, I believe this is step four. Oh, actually, you have her contract number.
It's step five, I think.
She was.
Step five.
He is step four.
Yeah.
This is his fourth against an administrator.
I don't have really questions and I know that everybody will do a fabulous job in their place, but I did have a little concern that even though you told us that it was going to happen, I had concern that you, that it was announced to the whole entire world before we actually voted on it. I was just a concern of mine because it kind of, now if anybody were to say no, it would look really bad. But so, so in the future, I would, I would hope that we can vote first.
And you, well, first, thank you for that because normally we do go ahead and assign. We make recommendations to you and we do announce that. The other reason that this is important for these moves to be announced to our staff is that our staff is, has a tremendous amount of unrest. They are unrest about who their principal is going to be. They're unrest about who their athletic director is going to be. They had significant concerns and I can tell you that this caused a lot to our staff.
No, I get it. I'm just hoping in the future maybe we can do it. I don't know that a week between announcement and now, that's all. Just in the future, if we could, we could vote first.
Any questions, more questions?
Anybody else? Please speak into the microphone. My light keeps going off. Is it like normal?
Oh, you got to make sure it's on solid.
It keep, yeah, it's going off on its own.
Then turn, push, yeah.
It's on now.
Okay. We got a backup.
Thank you. Okay, moving on. Dr. Croupy, athletic director.
Yes, so I first want to give the board the knowledge that we, I met last week with Bev and Darren and I had had some information that a former staff member was interested in the athletic director position, so I reached out to that person. And that person did share with me last night, which is why this memo came out a little later, that they were not interested in interviewing. We then had another person that we were going to interview that got a job coaching at Wayne State and so withdrew. And so that left us with two candidates. Given that situation, this felt like another time where we could do a reduction financially in central office to pull, give us another $100,000 of savings. And so with that, we would have Chuck Palanis become the athletic director slash director of communications. He's been there before and we would do this for a year. And then in February, we'd come back and report and see how that's working with communication. Chris Rattie would remain as a promise navigator, but pick up some additional things in the summer, like doing some scheduling and be on site because we also want Chuck to not be so overwhelmed, so we want Mr. Rattie to do that. And then Morgan Lee, who is, his intern is a junior now in college, she would pick up some additional items, like writing some of the letters, which will also be a good experience, stepping her up after the years that she's done that. Maybe she's going to do the magazine if we choose to do a magazine, but get her those steps to also alleviate some of that off. The board had decided to move Mr. Patterson to district council. And so in the athletic office, that saves us 99,995 without benefits in there. All people are talked to. We will sit down and have a real clear guidelines about who's doing what, especially with the secretary in that office as well, to make sure that everybody's comfortable. And we'll share that back with you in a spreadsheet like we do usually in August. We say, here's what everybody's doing. We'll make sure that we do that. But again, we have to cut costs. And again, we're looking for positions at the district level that we can do so with this.
Can we get job descriptions for this for Monday? On, on these, I'd like to see job descriptions before.
Sure, but that will take time away from doing the budget and other things that need to be done by Monday. But we certainly can take the job descriptions. We haven't, but to do them and sit down with everyone, but we certainly can.
Well, that's budgets finance. This is HR, so I don't see how it would affect the budget, but yeah, I would like to see them before voting.
Is that the, to the board, is that we all want job descriptions for the positions by Monday?
I mean, because we just. Clarifying question. We just gave Mr. Rattie $5,000 extra to do the high school sports, untapped up the $5,000 for the junior high sports, untapped those. And now we're looking to give him another $5,000. So.
Getting rid of the extra for high school, you got it, Richard.
Yeah, um, did we take that, his salary? No, his salary was, am I not doing it again?
We were told that the high school staff needs $40,000.
We'll bring all of that information to you next week. I, I don't believe that to be accurate. I believe that his salary currently is $49,000 and then the extra $5,000 because he'll pick up some additional things from the athletic director while Chuck's doing the other pieces. So we did not increase his salary this year was $49,000. We'll bring the data to you.
Is Chuck getting an increase?
Yep, the increase was a suggested $10,000 piece.
Okay, I don't have that memo.
It's, the memo is in front of you. I'm sorry, and it was.
It's new. It was new, so I might not have got it in time.
Right.
Where?
And since it's a committee, the hall is often that we're coming in and bringing it up the bat.
Which is fine because it is committee, the hall, we're not going into next week. I just didn't have a chance to see this memo.
And we will, we'll, you know, work on getting those job descriptions together and sit down. We do have a full day administrative workshop for the next two days, but we will make sure we get those done.
And can I add to Chuck's job, please? The, I want to say also he has two interns, I believe, student interns from the high school that kind of helps him a little bit with the taking of pictures and stuff. So that will alleviate some of the stress because I saw that on the website. And then also, you know, that area and Brad's area work very well together as a team, helping each other out. You know, like the videotaping, the, the class day, I mean, the commencements and, and, you know, which Brad's team did a wonderful job. I watched it and I thought it looked great, sounded great. And I already told Brad that, but you know, between the two of them, I, I think Chuck is going to be okay.
Well, do you remember that his job also is whenever there's an alert that goes out, Chuck is writing those and doing those. And so he is a true communications director. It's not just about taking pictures. That's a piece of his job, but that's why we give Morgan a few more hours. And it lifts her also to start some of those writing and being able to send that out and get her ready for when she graduates two years from now. And, you know, who knows, maybe she'll come back, maybe, you know?
That's how I got my job working in the district by helping out and filling in and being a co-op or intern or, you know, through the year. So I'm kind of, I, I think it's.
There's very few, few positions that we can combine. Is this ideal? No. Will Chuck do it? Yes. And if we balance out, that's why I really like to take some time to sit down with them to talk about who's doing what and hear Chuck's views. But we will get it to you by Thursday night.
Have you asked him?
Yes. Oh, yes, of course I did. I would never put this out to you without having a conversation with people first to make sure they're okay.
Anything else? Anybody? Okay. The next thing is contract reimbursements.
May I go ahead? President?
Dr. Croupy's vacation pay that she has due and $3,000 merit pay, if you want to comment to it, not to exceed $10,000.
It, it is also, if I may, the ability to pay out 10 days, that'll go directly to my, this is all per my contract, the 10 days that I would put towards a payout.
Is that the tax sheltered annuity?
Yes, it is the tax sheltered annuity. So 10 days go to the tax sheltered annuity and the $3,000 goes to my, goes a regular, and they're both per the contract.
When is Dr. Croupy's next review scheduled? Does she have one this year? Because I know she didn't have one last year.
No, I had one last year. I don't have one this year.
I haven't looked into it. We have to do the new training to do the next one.
Right, so I did have one last year. It was highly effective. And then, so this year is a skip and we didn't, remember, we did not do the training, as Bev said, because I didn't need to be evaluated this year. So we'll have to bring M A S B out. You did, yes.
Yeah.
And so my evaluation, if you keep the same cycle, will be next May, June.
So the, the end of the 25-26 school year?
Yes, and we'll have quarterly updates if we, if the board chooses to follow those same formats.
Okay, so the next thing on the agenda is the attorney reimbursement. This is for something we voted on in January 2024. I have the minutes. I don't know if you want to comment first.
Oh, just that, I, I have the minute that was on there as well, that, you know, this was a request that was done back there that states to administrators not to exceed $5,000. And fortunately, unfortunately, I've had to use that $5,000 and more and I'm asking for that reimbursement as approved by the board.
So I have to comment that I asked for it not to be on the agenda. It was told there'd be litigation and then it ended up on the agenda. And then it was written to us that I asked for it to be on the agenda, but the secretary's notes say I asked it not to be on the agenda. So now that it's public conversation, that's what I was kind of trying to avoid until we could talk further. That money was designated for a certain situation a year and a half ago. It's not money that just gets put in a fund that the superintendent can draw on whenever they want. And three board members were not even present and do not know the conversation of that closed session, what that involved. And so I just want to make those, those statements about the reimbursement. So we'll vote on it next Monday?
To be clear, though, we did not come out of that position and say you, whoever those two admins can only use it for this. It was voted, they can use it for legal fees.
But we didn't even say the, their names. We didn't say, we said two admin. We never said names who they were for. It's very unclear.
The board speaks through its minutes and these are legal. It does not have names and it does not say what the reason was. And through the investigation, the attorney asked for a memo or anything to prove this was for Dr. Croupy and was given, her lawyer gave our lawyer nothing to show.
I have to say, I'm not privy to that information and my attorney was never asked for that under my knowledge. And that would be attorney-client privilege that I have not given the ability for us to have that conversation here. But I'm going to say to you, I'm not privy to that, nor should we be talking about it.
I watched the meeting today because I wasn't around to this, so I watched it. What she said is exactly what was said coming out of that. It was two administrators paid not to exceed $5,000 for two administrators. That's what it said.
Okay.
Are we able to have a copy of those minutes added into the packet or into board books before Monday?
You can, you can download it, too.
Yeah.
But we'll download them and upload them to you.
I have them in there. It's the answer.
Yep, you can go and lock.
I think we watched the video as well, but it's, it's easier compared to the packet.
So the next thing is transportation director discussion. Dr. Croupy, go ahead.
Well, one of the, one of the first things that happened to me when I came back was a text message that very morning from Gina Brew asking me to stop by web. She had something to tell me and my heart went, and I did go in. We talked about it. She has made the decision that she wanted to retire. I said, what could we do because it's very short turnaround? We've done no training. That's a big job. Because remember when we decided to take our transportation back, it was transportation director and dispatcher, two different jobs, and she agreed to do them together. So I said to her, what, if we could offer you some dollars, would you stay for a year? That would allow us to post the job in January of next year and then have some, once a job, whoever was given that job, then we would have an opportunity to train them. Listen, she's pretty amazing. She's talking to me and she's picking up and she's announcing where somebody else is going and then taking out somebody else on. And I think this would be a significant loss to the board at this point in time. I did do this under M A S B's survey. I know that trustee LaFramboise did send the top part of that, but we need to remember that when we do salaries for Oakland County, we need to use Metro Detroit because our salaries are significantly higher than they are across. So I found the $84,000 to be within the parameters, especially for someone that's been an employee for that long period of time and dedicated to the district. So that was my recommendation to you. I will step away from the mic.
What is her length of service? Do we know?
Oh, way before me.
About a year.
Yes, she's a driver. She was, then she was removed. She still drives. The remover, she was removed from the position when all of this happened and then we brought that position back after we said maybe collaborating with Ferndale was not a cost savings.
And the, the comment was she still. And the comment was she still drives, and yes, she does.
1991.
Yeah.
1991.
My, my concern with this is that she received a 5% with everybody else, and this is a 19% pay increase. That would be 24% in the course of a year. And I realize it's a short term for one year. Maybe we can collaborate and find something else. Maybe she can help train the new person if we post it right away and pay her as a consultant. I just think this is an exorbitant amount of money when we're trying to make cuts.
There was no percentage increase for, for non-union or supervisor.
I looked at the '25-'26.
'24-'25.
When we gave everybody the 5%, she got the 5% like everybody else, which...
However, I do say that we spent a lot of time paying attention to operations and maintenance as well as communication and did not bring her up to the level of a director's salary. So I have to tell you that the time and effort that would come in for ordering buses, thinking through the electric buses, if that's what we choose to do, and all of that would be detrimental to hand that off to somebody else. And the good ones are retired.
They are.
So this is an adjustment, but it is in spirit a $15,000 retention bonus to not retire now. So with that, I'm, I'm then assuming slash hoping that this position would then be posted early so there could be considerable overlap that would allow someone to get up to speed and sort of eliminate this problem going forward.
Our intention would be to post it in the new year.
Okay.
Get as many applicants, do an interview process, and then, yes, have some overlap. Maybe not months and months of overlap, but enough time. The likelihood that somebody internally might apply would be my guess so that then that person could be trained by Gina during that timeframe. I think we have several people that might apply.
So is that kind of person going to anticipate getting $82,000, $83,000 a year? The other person?
At that point in time, we'll make recommendations based on their beginning in a transportation job. This is like steps that we don't have in place for our non-union administrators. This is like a step for her, and then you go back to the beginning of that. I would hope that we do that anyway. We have some things that should have been taken care of with developing steps for all of our administrators due to the O R S changes that have not been completed yet, that we will at some point in time, when we figure out when and if raises can be done for the rest of the staff, what that looks like. But for this, it's a transportation fund expense. It is not a general fund, is not that. And it is very important to organize and getting our kids going for next school year. So we would like to, we would like, if the board chooses, to have that opportunity.
But this is general fund.
Yeah, the point of clarification, the memo does say general fund.
Oh, well, it is transportation fund.
So how is transportation different than the general fund? Thank you.
There'll be a transportation report and a transportation claim that's done to the state based upon our usage of transportation, and there will be some general ed reimbursement, not a whole lot, and some special ed and GSRP reimbursement.
Is that new? A transportation fund?
No.
No?
No.
Okay. All right, is that it? Going on to transportation summer help?
I'll take this one again since I'm doing transportation. So we have always done summer bus cleaning. We have two bus drivers that stay back, and they clean all the buses. They scrub them down. They paint them as needed. They do work in the whole transportation area. What we can't find is a memo from trustee LaFramboise asked me last night, you know, where is the memo? We don't see a memo, but it has always been. And so, yes, Darren Stinkin has said, yes, it has always been. Whether or not the previous supervisor of that group did a memo, we did do a memo as we thought through everything that we needed to do coming up to this meeting and making sure we got it in. So it has, it has been. We tried to reduce it a little bit in the amount of time that somebody's working instead of just open-ended, you're going to, we're going to spend all summer cleaning the buses. But we did, it has, it has been done.
If I may, you know, they, they go through and take out the pencil markings, the markers underneath the seat, the gum and the stuff that kids leave behind, I could say. They scrub the floors. They, they make sure that all the seat belts are clean. I mean, they go through, I mean, it takes about almost, almost a week, week and a half for each bus. And the reason why, why I know this, it's because, remember COVID? In that summertime, we had all that help from the transportation department from, for, for the computers. Well, there was a couple of them that had to go and do the transportation department, and they would come back and they'd say, "You okay with all your computer upgrades and all that?" And I'd say, "Yeah, we're good." And they go, "Well, we're doing this." And they would tell me what they were doing with the buses. So that's how I know. I don't, you know, I'm not a magic person, but...
You weren't cleaning the buses?
Yeah, I wasn't cleaning the buses, thank goodness. But the only thing that was kind of brought up to me by somebody was it says in the memo, oh, I don't have my glasses on, something about maintenance of the bus. And I guess that they're not doing, they're not going to be changing tires. They're not going to be changing oil, but they're going to paint, you know, they can paint.
They could make any small damages, things like that, that Gina...
Because they have to do that, because if the state comes in when they look at those buses for licensing, if that bus isn't looking perfect, they'll, even for a scratch in the inside, they'll shut you down and you won't be able to use the bus. It's weird how it is. So the, all that stuff, I believe, and I'm just talking, probably will go to the mechanics to have the mechanics take care of the wheels and the brakes and the, you know, all that stuff. So, you know, even though this says somewhere in here about maintenance, we might want to just kind of fix that a little bit so it doesn't come out and say... But, yeah, it's not, they're not going to be the, they're not going to put on their overalls and get all greasy.
But we can certainly adjust. We can certainly adjust that memo.
How many buses?
Well, that's a really good question. Gina had surgery today, so I couldn't have that conversation. So we will certainly have that on Monday. I want to say six, but I don't believe that that might be correct. And so it's one of those where I say, "I'll get back to you on that."
All right, is that it on plus?
Now, is this, this $18,000, is that for both employees or just one?
That's for both. That's the total cost not to exceed.
So up to 30 weeks or up to eight weeks if they get them up? Because pretending it's six buses, that's a lot of time for six buses, but make a lot of...
It's a lot of work.
But Darren said it only takes about a week and a half for one bus, so...
Yeah, and, and, you know, in all honesty, I know Gina, and I haven't spoken to Gina in probably two years, two and a half years, but knowing that group over there that I've become close to, if, if they're done, they're not going to say, "I need 10 more hours, and I'm going to just hang around for the heck of it." They're going to be done because they, they really care about their jobs in Hazel Park. So I, I don't think we have to worry about being charged more than what, you know, so if they're done with the buses, they're going to move on. They want their summers.
So that's the maximum?
Yes, exactly.
We tried to have the conversation to reduce it, like maybe three weeks, four weeks, and that was a hard no, that that's not going to work. And so I will be supervising transportation this summer, and I'll make sure that I get over there and kind of see what they're doing, because I, I too am curious about, you know, minor things that they're doing on those buses as well. So we will give you feedback on how that's going. And listen, you don't, you don't have a more motivated staff to make sure that financially we're doing what we need to do. We are only putting costs on here that we feel like we absolutely have to do, and we've been combining and trying to be even more transparent so that you can see additional things.
And for disclosure, I really, this is just off the cuff, and I really don't know, you know, if I'm 100% right, but I just know what I know from the past, and I know the group, so... I didn't talk to anybody this past week or just want to make sure that, you know, who did Darren talk to? Nobody.
Is it institutional?
In fact, yeah, in fact, I need to call and talk to Gina.
Nine buses. Mr. Richardson just texted me. He must be watching at home. Nine buses. I was like, Greg Richardson's texting us. Thank you, Mr. Richardson.
And I'm going to get a Y W on my watch in a minute. I can guarantee that.
All right, moving on, buildings and grounds, gym floor maintenance. I don't have it in front of me. It's a little confused. It says not to exceed $9,025.44 with, but then it makes a comment that the high school's listed on there, but the sentence says without the high school. So I should have copied it. Maybe somebody can read or clarify.
Yes, it does say the high school main gym is addressed under a separate proposal and is not included to this response. We've, that's an error on our part and because it wasn't there, and then I asked her to put it in. And so, but we did share with you both quotes behind the piece. So this, that sentence is wrong. The high school main gym is on there for 36,461.
So it wasn't included in the $9,025.44?
Yes, yes. I want to draw your attention to a couple of things.
That's what I...
We did share the, on the gym floor, there's conversations about doing the volleyball and the basketball so that they can participate and do cross lines. If you go into the junior high or you go into the aux gym, those lines have always been on there as well. And so that cost is, and we didn't add that in there as I'm looking at the total piece. So there's, it's 800 for two volleyball courts being with really light lines and 1,600 for basketball courts. And this allows us to utilize this. We have to, I, I know that CJ himself has at least three different teams that are going to be going at the same time girls are going. And so we have to cross, which is why you bought those baskets to do those gyms. Trustee LaFramboise, you asked me about when things had been done, and I have a spreadsheet here. In 2024, Hoover and the high school main gym was done, as well as the junior high main gym and Webb was done. In 2023, nothing was done but Webster. So, you know, like, there's a spreadsheet of when these items need to be done that Greg sent off. But the high school main gym is to be done again, and you really need to do those gyms every year if you can, because the kids fall and slip when they're playing basketball and such. So more usage means you got to get it finished. We certainly can send this spreadsheet to the board.
Thank you.
Jamie?
Could you please type, talk into the microphone?
Me?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
I thought you sent me out. I was right on it.
No, you're eating. Okay, so, so I just asked her to send that to the board. My microphone was off. Sorry. And it's green now. So I just want to ask, clarify that the 16 plus eight, so an extra $2,400 above and beyond this $9,000?
Yes, I just noticed in our midst of this, we put the high school gym on, but not the extra for the lines that were asking to be done. So that will be corrected Monday for the meeting.
And so to clarify that, you're saying so like we can put the thing down and CJ can have ninth grade going, JV going this way, so that we're not...
So we have extra space. As we know, space became an issue.
For practices?
Yes, for practices. And so this will allow, just like you can do in the aux gym, you can go the opposite way. You'll be able to go the opposite way. And at first I was like, "Ooh, I don't know how that's going to look," but actually, we've seen it already. It's, it's very light lines that are on there.
And then, like you said, that is why we did the basketball.
That is why we did the basketballs.
We just have money on the...
If they can't practice with the three-point or anything like that, it's very difficult to do that, to have that ready.
So what was the extra amount?
It was 800 for volleyball and 1,600 for basketball. Excuse me.
Okay, just to make sure. So you're going to add that to the memo. When I footed this, it was actually $11,152.44, not about $9,000?
We will use our calculators to double-check the cost of all that with that additional thing in there. Thank you for pointing that out.
I got the same number, $11,000. Okay, are we done with the gym floors? All right, Roosevelt roof repair, $8,950. And I wrote, I didn't check my email before I came, but the beginning of that is Roosevelt, but the description on that one page on that memo is Webb at $5,400. So the top is roof damage at Roosevelt. Did you get my message on it?
Yes, we changed that, but I missed the cost piece that didn't get changed. So yes, the...
$8,900.
It's $8,950. We did fix the memo later this afternoon. That, that takes that middle piece out, just the cost is wrong. And so, yes, this is something that needs to be done before winter. It is not an emergency. It does look like we copied and pasted and then forgot to grab that out, so we apologize. We'll get that fixed. But yes, it has to be done before winter for us. It is not an emergency, but an emergency before winter.
So it is to invest, though?
It is on our building, Roosevelt, and per the contract, we are responsible for those kinds of things.
I'm just making sure it's not Webb.
No, it's not Webb. Webb is good.
Okay, that's, that's what I was just...
And it's not the whole roof, it's just part of it.
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
Do you want to speak?
No, I'm pretty about it.
No, I got it. I...
Okay, anything else on that? Hearing none. Moving on to bus purchase.
Yes, so when I returned, there was already a discussion that was occurring about the purchase of the next bus, which we need to do. Number one, we didn't end up getting the electric buses. They wouldn't now be out until the following '26, '27 school year if we choose to do that. So we'll come back and have some committee meetings about that. But we do need to get a bus. We have to remove buses that aren't appropriate for our kids. And I do want to point out is that as we continue to buy these $5,000 buses, two times, two years in a row, we've had our third graders stranded in Lansing and, or have to jump on the second bus because our buses break down. And so we do need to spend and get a new bus, and we will still need regular buses when we, if we do electric buses.
Anybody questions?
So is this cycling?
Bus two this year.
This is cycling a bus out of the fleet that is unsafe and inoperable for students?
Yes.
So we're still going to keep the nine buses?
I know there'll be eight, because one of the, one of the nine will go.
Right.
But this will be the one. But it might not be here in time because we're ordering it late, so...
Let's not claim that one.
Okay. Except if your child gets on the bus and it's dirty, you would be mad.
Well, we won't have it.
Let's hope not.
So when do we plan on purchasing this bus?
Next Tuesday if you approve it.
Bert? Okay.
Finished? Any more bus questions, comments? Okay. HVAC filters, $11,039.15. I think we do that all the time.
Yes, remember during COVID, we did it three times a year, transfer. Before COVID, we did one, and it was one of our agreements with M E A to make sure that we kept best practices in place. And so this is the quote for two times a year.
So the $11,000 is for twice?
Yes.
So it's around roughly $3,500 a time?
Yep.
That's good. We need it.
Yep.
Yet we want our kids and our staff to breathe healthier.
Playground mulch, $20,805. It's crazy.
Mulch is expensive. We know it's also expensive to build, but it has not been done? Hold on. What was my answer today from Greg? I think since, I'm going to look slowly for my answer.
Did you write it to me?
No.
Oh, okay.
Because I didn't get it until later this afternoon.
Oh, yeah.
I would say '24.
I want to say '20, '23 is the answer. '20, '23. It's been two years. And remember, this also takes away some of the custodial work that has to be done because now it's blown in versus raking it in, and it's worth that time to get it done. That's a safety issue. I, as I said in my weekly memo, that in my experience, you do it every year because it gets smashed down by the kids and the families on the playground, and then it's not safe, and kids get hurt, and yada, yada, yada. But it is expensive. And it's special mulch.
What were you doing, wood chips at one time?
A special wood, it's, it's wood chips.
It's fine ground.
But it's, it's special coated wood chips for playgrounds.
It's also double-ground, like, so it's smaller and less, like, pokey.
Okay, moving on to bleachers.
Yes, I apologize for this last-minute ad. Today, we were in a discussion with Greg, and we were talking about the bleachers and the wear and tear on them and how, as you know, or maybe you don't know, that when you are on those big bleachers and people jump on them, which they do, et cetera, that they come unscrewed. And so I said, perhaps before we come up with a solution, perhaps we should have somebody come out to investigate and give us guidance. There are litigation issues when you aren't regularly checking your bleachers when kids get hurt, because then you find that you have inappropriately taken care of your kids. And so this $500 Greg told me is for home and away, and it's also for softball and baseball bleachers as well. So actually, I thought it was a real good bang for our buck, also to make sure that we have a report that we can share with you about what needs to be done.
These are the outdoor bleachers?
Outdoor bleachers.
Can I ask a question? Does this include our bleachers at the junior high?
I don't believe so, but we could ask for that to be added for next week when we appropriately give you a memo and appropriately put it on the agenda.
I'm just questioning because I know the baseball bleachers under there are old.
The outside. Inside, I believe they had done last year, but outside.
Our bleachers and softball ones just at the junior high. I was wondering if this included the junior high?
So why are they not checking the inside parts?
Ours are brand new at the high school.
I know, but it doesn't mean that these...
Um, I will double-check, but I believe we had our bleachers done last year, and you really kind of usually go every other year, but I will check on that. kind of usually go every other year, but I will check on that for the inside. And we should have a report that tells us the oiling and other things that we need to do, right, on those to keep them safe for people. We'll have that to you next week in a memo.
Okay, moving on to finances, and the first item there is budget discussion. Dr. Croupy?
I'm going to take it again, only because, and then you can ask Monica additional questions. As you know, we asked, as has been done in the past, to go to June 30th. And I do know that several individuals are not available, and I respect that. I do need to tell you what that means, though, that as of this afternoon, we weren't totally finished with the 24, 25 final budget, and we have not started the 25, 26 other than looking at some salaries. So what does that say to me? That says that the time and effort that usually you spend a very long period of time working together as a team, really looking at items and questioning them is not going to happen. What we will do is give a list to Crystal and Monica of all the things that we've changed in the budget to make sure that when they roll those pieces over versus doing zero base, that we take those out. As you know, Matt would just roll them over and add a percentage on it. We're going to have to do that a little differently this year. And so what we get is that I don't believe will be accurate at all. We also don't, as I was today with legislators and superintendents, we have no idea where that budget's going to come in for state aid. And so we just put 395 on to the state aid. That is where Governor Whitmer is projecting to give that extra amount.
10,000.
Yeah, the 350 extra. Yes, as well as we'll do a zero flat enrollment. I'm interestingly, like, excited of the amount of people we had last Friday, so I gave those numbers. My suggestion was to do a budget amendment in August, but Monica spoke with her mentor, and their suggestion is just give a budget update. Like, we used to do those spreadsheets with Dan to say kind of where we are, so give a little more in-depth budget update. Hopefully, we'll have our Title I dollars in and other grants that are in, and hopefully we'll have a budget from the state. I don't know. As you know, all the organizations have requested that. So just to know is that in the midst of all of this, in the midst that everybody was doing, that we are not where we need to be. We are ready and going strong for our audit, which is good, and we'll be ready for those pieces. But as where we are with the budget, I haven't seen the 24, 25 final budget yet. So, and there's a lot of questions we're going to want to do. So just to know that it's not going to be where we want it next Monday, but we will present it and give it to you. It's also, it was put in the paper today.
So that we're going to have the budget for 25, 26?
We have to.
Next week?
Yes, but again, it's not going to, I'm going to say this very gently and hope that it links up. It's not going to be worth the paper that it's written on, because we're just starting it, and you can't do a budget in five days of this level.
Is Matt still working with us, or no?
He has reduced them out, but really, he's just working with them to pull reports and help guide them. Like, right now, I believe he's looking at our 24, 25 budget and the end of the year budget and seeing what Crystal and Monica did, and just reviewing it and see if there's anything that sticks out to him.
Okay, because I was under the impression, when we voted to extend him, we extended him to May 31st.
I wasn't here, I can't answer, I'll have to get back with you on that.
I thought it was for June. It was for May and June, yeah, that's what I got.
It was June to exceed a certain dollar amount?
Yeah, there was a limited amount of hours, and that's what he's been doing. And so they've been doing the work up front, and he's looking at this, because we want to be, we want to do it right, right? We want to get close, because also you'll get an audit finding if your line items aren't where they need to be.
So the state is incredibly unlikely to have a budget by June 30th.
Well, you never know what's going to happen.
Sure. But I think that no one will be surprised to find that the state does not have a finalized budget by June 30th. What impact will that have?
Well, as it has had...
It's difficult to plan.
Right, it's difficult to plan. And I can tell you, one of the superintendents here today of a very large school district said they eliminated 10 staff. They lost their jobs because they are concerned about where the budget's going to come in. And they might not get as much 31A dollars. And so it was, again, explained to our legislators today about the importance of thinking about the process that Michigan uses for budget approvals. I think I've shared before, in Illinois, you used a year back CPI so that you knew what your tax rates and everything were coming in a year back, instead of trying to deal with what the legislature is doing. So I hope that at some point they try to fix this, but it is, when I came here, it's like, what? This is crazy. You don't even know sometimes until December, some grant dollars that you've got for early on. It is just not a cohesive way to go about budgeting for schools. But we know, schools are not funded appropriately, nor is Hazel Park.
So I have a couple of things. The budgets always has to be estimated. It's ridiculous how the state works things out. But there also, Debbie went to that meeting, said be very conservative when you're planning a budget this year, and that's why they're all in uproar, because who knows what's coming from Washington DC? And if they cut Title I and so many things, that budget will probably be amended 10 times. But I'm glad that we're going to have something, though, next week. But we also have to have that budget, that budget hearing for the public. So will that come afterwards?
No, the budget...
Go ahead.
We have it posted that we will have a budget hearing at 5:00 prior to the regular meeting.
Oh, good, good, okay. And then the local taxes, we haven't received them all. We received the rest. You and Crystal thought we had like 700,000 coming from local?
We did just receive a delinquent tax payment about, I think it was around 645,000.
That's probably it.
So I think that's the piece.
Nice, okay, good, thank you. Anybody else? Anything else on the budget? We'll move on to Delta Network Solution block hours. Mr. Wilkins?
I can answer that. Good evening. Just coming to the board to ask for approval of 40 block hours to, this helps us troubleshoot any issues that we may be having with our network, with our firewall, any upgrades, monitoring and documentation. We do a lot of it in-house, but if it's something that we can't figure out or we need another set of eyes on, we contact them and they help us out.
Do these hours expire?
No.
Given that we last purchased them in 2021, I'm guessing no, but...
No.
They last until they're gone?
Yep.
Would you give an example, like we spoke about today, of what's, why this is important to do this right now as well?
We have a 10 gig pipeline from Oakland schools, and currently, we're running 1 gig. So we're trying to do this so we can, they can help us upgrade and figure out why we're only running on 1 gig instead of the 10 gig.
So how many hours do you think that'll eat up out of your 40?
I can't even say. I mean, it could be just something in a config file that could be wrong, and it could be...
Delta has been very gracious with us through the years. We, basically, when they started as a company, we were one of the first people to get their routers and their switches. So they, we've had this relationship with them for years. And Deena and the group there, it's just wonderful, the two owners there. And I haven't talked to them in three years either, but still, I know the company, and I know they've helped me out quite a bit. If there's a problem, like if all of a sudden there's a spam or something going through our network, a virus, they will get on, they have five or six different people that will get on it, and they will have it fixed, you know, within, you know, hours, rather than, you know, poor Brad trying to rack his brain out dealing with everything else. So, you know, with the versatile of Brad's position, it's so vast that he can't narrow in on just networks. These guys live and breathe and see, you know, the network in their brains. So it's nice to have that company, and it does help the district a lot. I don't know if that helps.
Well, I know this is standard practice, like, for us at my work, our software, you prepay hours, and then whenever you have a problem or a question, you call them and they take it off, whatever you pay.
Right.
So I know it's standard practice. I'm just hoping that this lasts another 45 years or 30 years.
Yeah, that's what I'm hoping. We, like I say, a lot of it, we are able to do in-house, and even sometimes, it's even, you know, it might be a quick phone call to them, and they don't, you know, they guide us in the right direction, and they don't charge for that, so.
Okay, we're good?
Good job.
Thank you. Teaching and learning, summer projects and professional learning.
Before Dr. Dolmich speaks, the title is wrong, that this is curriculum and that letter is in front of you. And I would guess that the summer work projects are not on here, but we will have them for you next week.
Correct, thank you. Is this on? Okay. So I wanted to bring forward a memo that really, hopefully, streamlines the ordering process and helps the board see exactly what we're ordering, instead of bringing everything to you piecemeal, which we often do, we'll bring two or three things on one meeting, then another two or three things. So what I've compiled here in the curriculum purchases are the vast majority of the purchases that we will be utilizing next year. It's not all of those things. For example, there are other smaller items, such as science materials that we replace, but we are not estimating what those are because we have to wait till we see what our teachers have and what they need. So the hope was to bring this to you. I know that number looks large, but to make sure we brought this to you, so you really have a big picture of what it is that we need to order to really sustain teaching and learning and the instructional resources and materials in the district. And then also, this helps us, if approved next week, to move forward with the ordering. I would like to note that some of the things on there are very dependent on enrollment. For example, one of the things you notice is handwriting without tears. Those are the handwriting books we use. We never order those until we have a more solid understanding of what the enrollment is. So this really just captures the major pieces that we are going to order. One of the changes, if you looked at this over the weekend, was in subject.com. Prior to an update this afternoon, it indicated that that purchase was going to be 93,500. Subject.com is our online courses that are utilized by Invest, MCA, VVA, Advantage and High School. We did enter in some negotiations this afternoon, myself and Dr. Croupy, and actually increased, but is significantly less than most school districts who are using subject.com. So you will note that it now says 131,250. One of the reasons for the increase is that we've increased the number of students, especially at VVA and also at Invest. So thus, there was an increase. Because of the strong relationship we have with subject.com and the fact that we were the first ones in Michigan to onboard them last year, and it's really expanded in the area after that, that was a significant reduction. They indicated that most districts our size are upwards of 175 to 200,000 per year. Because they started with us and they're really trying to honor us as a client in getting them launched, they kept that cost quite low. So I know there's a number of different things on there, I'd be happy to answer any of those questions around those pieces, but the goal here is really to bring the majority of the bigger purchases to the one board meeting, so you can really see what it is in its entirety.
Dr. Dolmich, can you speak briefly to teacher of record and the changes that we've made, especially this year, the savings that sits in how we do that, please?
Yes. So, starting this fall, there was a transition by, per the state, in terms of how we run those courses. So in the past, we could, we had a teacher that would support, or sometimes in some of our sites, we would have a paraprofessional, and that was okay. But as of this fall, we had to have a teacher of record in the certification in each area. So for example, if a student was taking a math course, we now have to have a teacher of record that has a math certification. We've got to have a teacher of record in all the appropriate certifications. What that did, if we were to have transitioned to a model where we used our own staff to do that, that would have been a significant increase. By going to subject.com and utilizing their teachers with this amazing amount of money, it sounds like a lot, but trust me, this per license fee is 375. They're charging other districts 1,700 per license. So we really have realized a huge saving, number one, by being the first that launched into that. That was due to great advocacy and partnership that Dr. Croupy, I think, fostered when you were out at AAS, perhaps? And we were the first school district in Michigan, and now they've got a number of clients based on that. So they're really trying to honor the work. By going with subject and not having to have a teacher of record in all those content areas, it is a significant savings.
I just have a quick clarification, because I printed this out over the weekend, and subject.com is not online. So the new total, because I have 34,000.
Debbie, you should have a memo at your place, but I'll give you mine, yeah.
There's a memo at my place?
Yes.
Well, then I'll find it. I'm just saying, so the subject.com was an extra 99, so it was 131, 131?
Yes, and I think the memo, trustee Lafranboise, that you're looking at is the one that's linked to the title in the board packet. So that is another one.
This is in there.
But the one that, you shouldn't have it, I thought I gave one at your spot. And the total that should be on the teaching and learning is 473,118, or 111. And that really spans all of our resources for math, ELA, social studies, assessment, science, online courses. While I indicated that there are other things that we would order, this is the vast majority that's represented on this memo that we would be ordering this school year.
I want to remind you that in the past, if we rebought our math and whatever, you approved that very early on, and the items that would become year, we didn't bring it to you. And so we really wanted to bring it to you to realize where a bulk of that curriculum instruction is coming.
Would we anticipate anything more for the year?
So you'll have smaller things. So for example, every year, our teachers need their science materials replenished. And we wait, and based on, as Dr. Croupy indicated, really going back to that zero base budgeting. We don't just order materials, we have all of our teachers' inventory, submit that information to Ms. Yates, and then she generates a total amount. That's the same thing for Project Lead the Way costs. So there are smaller types of things that we would be ordering throughout the school year, more like that. But again, most of what we would be ordering for this year anyways, because we are not moving forward, as we are trying to really be financially responsible with any pilots or any updating of materials. Really just staying status quo with what we've had, and then making sure that before we order, we're looking at our enrollment numbers to keep those costs as tight as possible. And of course, if anything exceeded that $5,000 amount throughout the school year, that will come to the board as per policy.
I think this is a question for Dr. Croupy, maybe. The grand total is different than the recommendation total. Maybe it's just an error typo?
We'll take a look at it, thank you.
And I think that was one that we were negotiating this afternoon, trying to get a good amount of money for you, so it was accurate, and so that did get updated.
Yeah, they, we were able to negotiate them down in the price that they actually were sharing with us when the meeting started. Got to ask. If you don't ask, you won't get it.
So this number may be less still, depending on enrollment?
Could be, mhm.
Or it could be more, depending on enrollment?
You know what? I tend to put a little bit of a higher amount in here, not significantly higher, so likely it would be a little bit lower. Not a lot, because we have historical information that we look at every year, and then we match it with enrollment numbers. So if our enrollment stays pretty close to status quo, then the numbers would be very similar to this year, unless, of course, costs have increased.
Okay, anybody else? Nope, thank you. Fiduciary and flow-through funds discussion.
I did not get a report prepared for this, and I can try for next Monday. I needed to get some information from Crystal, and she was really deep working on the budget amendment and budget, and her and I spent a lot of time on that. amendment and budget, and her and I spent a lot of time on that. So, I didn't want to stop that progress to get this memo.
But I, this isn't what I thought it was, but this is the request from trustee Lafranbois to bring this topic up regarding fiduciary flow-through funds, which we have two. One is the promise zone, but it just, where the fiduciary, it comes in, it goes out, it comes in, it goes out.
And for one single item?
Yes, for one single item, and that's tax capture. And we, it has to come through us this way. The other piece is for the coalition. The coalition has been part of what we have done for many years, going back to Jared, and then we are the fiduciary also for the federal grant we've got for $125,000 a year. All of those were brought to you and approved, and the grants were brought to you and approved. Looks like we need to work on bringing those grants back to you again, like we were before I left, and so we'll get some of those grants so you can see that.
So, I guess my concern when I, when I looked at it is that we had not been reimbursed for the money as of yet, and so that causes concern for me. And I think as a board, when we do our new policies, we need to really put together a policy that outlines what responsibilities we have and what responsibilities the other organization has, so that we don't have any issues moving forward.
To, to address that piece around the reimbursement, to date, and this actually happened at the end of March, we've recaptured $68,201.88, and I only know that because I've been involved in working through that. That was for the 2324 school year. We have quarter one and quarter two of this school year, which will be another $65,000, which will bring us up to the total costs that we have incurred for the coalition, and that also includes the additional grant, which we get from the Alliance of another $38,000. So, in its entirety, just so the board understands, we really have captured all the dollars that we've extended, we've expended. And the reason that we really did not pull those funds down had only had something to do with the great difficulty it was to navigate a federal site. There are about three different sites that we have to get access to, and I believe Dr. Croupy, her own self, spent six to eight weeks going back and forth with these individuals just to get in. Then when we had, we had to make a transition, it took another three or four weeks to get Crystal in there so we could pull the funds down. So, I did want to explain that through, but just wanted to assure everyone that as of next week, we will caught up to the end of March, and we have to do it on a quarterly basis. So, we will, again, pull money down in June, July, whenever.
I also feel it's important to state that this was one of the grants that did not get done in the 2324 school year. So, when we became aware of that, I spent October, November, December, going back and forth with the federal government about how to get in the system. They were very helpful at the very first, but when it came to the financial pieces, and so they were able to continue after I left, picking up on that. It is, we've got it now, but it was very difficult to get people to communicate, and they point you to someone else. And so, I do want to say, though, in the 2324 school year, this, that is, those are money that we did not get that we needed to get for this upcoming school year. And I think what we had talked about in November is doing quarterly reports for those kind of things, and I was not able to do that for you, but it is certainly something that we can make as a manner of our business office practices at quarterly to say how much we've expended in those, especially with the great work that Crystal and Monica are doing, being able to pull grant reports in a different manner. So, I hope that this will be alleviated, alleviated going forward.
Me too. Me too.
Okay, number five, I'm going to slaughter this. Is it U-Ceru?
You're close, is U-Ceru. And this is our training for, oh yes, thank you. It walks hand in hand with crisis prevention and intervention. This is our trauma-based training, where our staff also learns a lot about how to work with students that are dysregulated and acting out. This year will look a little bit different. This will be our second year implementing U-Ceru. We are moving from 10 trainers to two trainers, as we found that our board-certified behavior analysts are truly the district folks that are able to move around and train our different staff groups. They will be training this year, if approved, in Tecumseh, that was the closest location, and we need annual renewals for our trainers. So, this will be at every year to maintain U-Ceru. We'll have to have our trainers trained. Currently, we're using it at Edison and in our Level III and IV resource rooms at Hoover, United Oaks, and Webb. We are also utilizing the trauma-based training at Webster, which has been extremely helpful to their staff. Do you have any questions?
Anybody? Any questions? No, I'm glad they're having all those buildings.
This is committed to general fund or special ed?
There's, there's not really a difference of that, really, because you get an allocation for your special ed right, and then we have idea funds, and we have staff that are sitting in those funds. And so, it's, it's, they're really the same thing.
We do have some of it coming out of the center fund, though, so.
Yeah, fifty-fifty.
That offsets a little bit.
I just didn't say so. Centered funds, one's general fund?
Well, YBCBA is at Edison, and the other one is at the district.
I have that all, so. Oh, no, they're not. Okay, there it is, sorry.
All right, are we good? Moving on to the athletic equipment uniforms for fall.
Isn't this exciting? And so, we had to put in place that in August, December, and May, that we would receive everything that is needed for the upcoming sports, that we could enter now, order now for fall, and write in fall, we'll order for winter, so that we didn't have these uniforms at the last minute. So, what we have in here are what was given to us by the athletic department for the sports season, as well as the quotes behind it. So, very well done. And yes, it was requested, do we have a three-year plan? Our three-year plans were not updated this year, so they'll be updated in the fall, and it should include our fall sports, I mean, all of our sports going forward, so that hopefully we can get on a cycle that you guys will all be used to as well.
Questions?
Yes, Dr. Cost, I know you were working on those. Can you tell us where they stand? I thought they were pretty close to being finished.
There's been a lot of hard work that has gone into all of them. I believe that they're close to being done, and with the transition between Dr. Croupy and me, the decision was made to hold off until fall finalized, so it wasn't completed by then.
The football stuff was separate, correct? That they were going to fundraise and reimburse, wasn't that a football purchase?
Fifty percent, yes.
Yeah, but that, is that ordered and everything?
That was ordered before we voted on it.
Yeah.
Yes, it was, it was ordered before you voted on it.
Because we voted on it in full.
I didn't realize, okay.
It was, it was, you voted on it, and the caveat was it would come out of next year's budget.
Okay.
Well, it was already.
Paid for.
Paid for.
Yeah, they ordered it before that timeframe. It was already paid for.
I need to go back and check because I don't, the motion was they have it paid for out of next year's budget. So, I will double check on that.
Yeah, they're ordered and paid for. They were ordered before you even came to the board.
I still like to go back.
I didn't realize that myself, so.
The question I have is, I'm looking at this list in the memo, and I'm not trying to be funny, but I don't see socks for the high school cross-country, and I don't see socks for the volleyball.
They don't ask, they don't get.
A hundred percent. That is the way it was last fall as well. You ask for what you need, and I've been assured that Mr. Patterson has shared with us everything that everybody asked for, and so that's why this in the wintertime was really important and it didn't get completed, because they are supposed to ask you, the coaches are supposed to ask for what they want, and so.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure it didn't come back a hollow.
I'm just curious, how long, like, for instance, we're buying new soccer uniforms. How long do we anticipate keeping the same uniform?
I think that's a discussion that we can do when they develop that plan. My experience has been, since I've been here, that it depends on the kids and the activities and how bad a shape they are. It also depended on what I learned over the last several years, getting further involved in the athletic department, whether they were returned, whether they were then put in storage bins so you could find them. We found uniforms like in a locker area where they were in plastic bags, where somebody had placed them in there. So, I think, I'm hoping that we've discussed a process of checking them back in, and then putting them in containers, and having them stored, and those kind of things, that this will alleviate some of that. So, I think that'll be prudent on the next athletic director to make that, sure that organization takes place.
So, I'm just assuming, for instance, I used to manage a million soccer teams, and, not a million, but the, like Nike would make those uniforms no longer available after two years because, and they have to force you to buy a new one, I guess.
Yes.
So, I was just curious, do we anticipate, like, every other year, every third year?
I, again, would have to lay that back to when the athletic department new person steps in and brings a proposal back to you. I know what I think as a parent, and I know what I think as a superintendent, when I look at some of those uniforms, like, some of our kids, they needed uniforms, and they were, individual people had to buy them shirts because they didn't have uniforms, so.
No, I'm not.
It's just wear and tear.
Yeah.
I do have a question. There was a public comment at our last meeting that the junior high didn't have uniforms. And I think that it was cost country, and they had to wear red t-shirts or something along that line. I don't really remember the exact thing that the parent said, but can we have Mr. Patterson look into that and possibly add that to this memo?
Yes, we can look at that. I know a couple of years ago, our kids had, I might have seen them, were, were running when my daughter's running, and our uniforms were very embarrassing. They had different-sized shirts, they didn't have proper pants, they didn't have a proper uniform. So, yes, we can ask about the junior high cross-country for sure.
I believe it was cost country. Does anybody?
I think you're right.
Okay, I just want to make sure that that's on there and that they're taken care of also, since we have high school on here.
Okay. Anything else? CTE purchase for the woodworking program, $6,033. Is that for one tool?
It is for one tool, yes. So, it is a CNC machine that is run by a computer that has precision cutting. As you know, we've got a great woodworking program at our high school, and we expanded to our junior high, and we are really building steam in that program. This is just another tool that would expand the opportunities for our students, and this is all covered by the Career Readiness Grant. So, we, through the programming that we get, we get dollars from the ISD. We also get dollars from participation of students in CTE, which really amounts to a significant number of, a significant number. And what we are always tasked to do is put that back into the program. And so, what this is, is utilizing some of those dollars to put it back into the program and expand the opportunities further for our students. And we're hoping to bring this forward because if we order this, it is something that has to be done by the end of the month, and it has to be ordered and paid for as it relates to these funds when we get the reimbursement from the ISD.
I also want to mention that last night in my letter to you, I put a link so that you could look exactly what it looks like.
Yeah, nice, very nice. Anybody, any questions? Okay, supplemental funding, that, I was curious, was added since we met on Monday?
So, the supplemental funding is centered around getting through the summertime funding wise, and so, we have to move on that to look at a state aid note. We were told at first we couldn't have a state aid note, that's not accurate. We can have a state aid note, you just have to go through a different treasury approval process. We spoke today with Jim Crowley, I got it right this time, I did not call him Chuck Crowley. I knew a Chuck Crowley in Illinois, and so I keep calling him Chuck, but Jim Crowley today, and we also. We also have an email out to Huntington. Huntington is willing to do a state aid note with us again, as we did in the past. It's a little more expedient than going through the state's MYLEF program, which would have some different steps that we'd have to do. The important part of this is, we would have to have a resolution ready on Monday for you to approve it, and then we have a step, and then we have to submit it to the state, which will take 30 days for the treasury. So, in the next few days, which is why I said budgeting, our time is really caught up on making sure we get the budget done and that financially, we're doing what we need to. We will have to do a cash flow analysis, look at how much we will need to do, and I'll also be looking with them to see if we can pay back the rest of that loan earlier than August to reduce some of those interest fees as well. So, Huntington has agreed to step up. We'll have more information, but this is something that we're running fast with because we hadn't started it, and we want to make sure that everybody is good to go forth, and we get paid, we get our staff paid next year. So, we'll have more information on Monday, and hopefully a resolution, because we will need that in order to make this. We cannot wait till July.
So, this is, the supplemental funding is, like, we had to borrow the $12 million that we're buying for this year?
Mhm. And again, as I said, we are going to be looking, and maybe we'll have that information for you on Monday, maybe not. If not, it'll be an update to you. We're looking at paying those dollars back earlier.
Correct, so we're going to borrow the four million to pay back.
Got to pay that by August.
And then, additional to start this school year, I'm assuming to get us through October, when our first.
Yes, we may be able to, as he said, as we're going to, we haven't been able to look at that yet, but we would, might not have to get that until September, later September, which would be reduced, but we don't have a cash flow piece because we don't have our budgets done, but we've got to have something ready for Monday. And by the way, Monica had already started working on this in communication, we just needed to bring it together with our attorneys to make sure we're doing it in the right manner to get the funds in time.
Okay, number nine, auditor engagement, $65,000. I think we need to book them tonight.
So, I think we have discussed before, I was really working hard to make sure that they would commit and do our audit again, and that we had access to the files and could get a jump. I wanted nothing more than to be on time with this. And my eagerness, once I got the letter from them, I did sign it before it came to board for approval, so apologies for that. I was just really anxious to make sure that we would be on time and get ahead of this a little bit. I didn't note in the memo, but the price that they quoted us was less than Plant Moran had been previously charging us still. So, and we really already started working with them to get, get things going for this audit.
Sounds good. Anybody, questions, comments? Nope. Very good, thank you.
Wait, I have one.
Oh, go ahead.
This says, if any additional major programs are required to be audited, it could be naturally $5,000, something to be fine.
Each program, I suppose.
Each thing?
Yeah.
Above and beyond.
But they've included two major programs in the base fee, so it would just be if they had additional pieces they had.
And when do they anticipate starting?
They will be out for one day in July to do the planning, and then they have us booked for the first two weeks in September to do the audit.
I think the key, I just want to reiterate, what Monica said, though, is that she's already doing, pulling reports and has access to the system, which it was late when we even got access to, like, I never received an email until October.
So, we're not anticipating it taking them more than the two weeks that they're providing us? Okay.
Say, it sounds like they're already starting on.
Well, they do, they'll do field work for two weeks and then take it back and do additional work. It's not.
I just want to make sure it's going to be on time.
I, and we're really fortunate that they gave us September dates. In Troy, we had the beginning of August, which meant everything wasn't really finalized yet, so this gives us a little time to make sure we've got everything lined up properly and get ahead of that. So, we were grateful for the timing that they scheduled us. I think that's why I wanted to get the letter signed, so that they.
So, you have eight weeks.
Yes.
To prep.
So, our board policy on page 57, I just had, I was double-checking because I thought I read it, it says, "All revenues and expenditures of student activity funds shall be properly processed through internal accounting system of the district. All student activity funds shall be audited annually at the same time as the general fund budget." So, is that an additional one?
Oh, I think that would be us internally auditing that at the same time, so we're just reviewing everything that's gone through those accounts when we're looking at the other pieces.
Okay.
They may look at that some, but that wouldn't be an additional fee.
Okay, the next, let's see, student accident insurance.
Should have kept the mic with me.
$12,500. You're up again.
So, this is the same coverage that we had opted for last year to cover our uninsured student athletes. They have given us a renewal option at the same price we paid last year. And I did, I had heard from some that the insurance wasn't exactly what we thought it was or how it would play out, so I did confirm with the insurance company that this really, even though it says in some of the paperwork that I saw. some of the paperwork that I saw, that it's a supplemental or a secondary policy, this, if the student has no insurance, this becomes their primary coverage.
It's not a bad price.
It was asked for me, how many students, so I don't know how many students after I left, but there were two before I left, which had some major pieces and they didn't have insurance, so it made a real difference. And then it doesn't, when you have follow-up appointments, there isn't a cap of each, how much each appointment was, and so our Ruth Geissi Fund helped that family, if you remember, who had exorbitant costs above the mix. So we have a good ways to kind of help people.
Who does that in the administration? Who oversees it or?
Ryan Voss did. So that position, so that's one of the positions that we have not set to decide how that will go. I'm really trying to pull as much off as I can right now of the finance department as I would have anyway then, so that they can focus specifically on audits and what have you, and then we'll add a piece on every year as we get through a year cycle. So I would guess I might, or, which means Jamie might, but.
That's fine, only two or four, five, you know.
Well, it's a great service. We had it for years and it was nice to bring it back, so. Very good. Monthly financial reporting, any questions?
I want to answer, if I can, first Debbie's questions. The Marty Four Funds LLC descriptor was a fundraiser that was done at Hoover, it's the catalog sales, and it wasn't approved. And so it's page nine, Marty Four Funds LLC. It was also taken out of the general fund instead of activities fund, so your catch allowed that to get boxed back into the activity account. So I know that was one of your closing questions. The other question was on page three regarding the credit card statement and the Hilton Minneapolis. And so Brooke Barnett and Carla Gressley and Chris Rattie were approved to go on the conference. The other two were not approved ahead of time, and so that's an error on our part, not getting those approved. That is covered for in the community school grant for them, but they came on so late that that is why that approval didn't get to you. That is our error, because normally what we would do is let you know, hey, we have two people that just got employed and send an email to the president or to the board regarding that, and so that's something we will be more mindful of in the future. The $35 was to pay for Chloe's bag to get on the plane. Can I see what, there's something else I didn't answer?
No, this was the other thing, you gave me that thing, Star is Day. We bought a lot of toilet paper.
Okay, we give you that, but also the credit card statement on page nine is for Christie. That was a summer school employees and the individuals that went to Washington DC.
That's why it's two, because there's two separate, two separate companies doing the thing.
Yeah, the check run is the, all the summer school employees have to be licensed through LARA now or fingerprinted through the LARA licensing. And the other thing, A1 is all the parents going to DC.
So if we, if they're already employees, they have to be fingerprinted for summer school, or these are additional outside?
Yeah. Really? Licenses again. Here, they've just made a new legislation on it for, it's the second type of fingerprint, you might be familiar with early childhood and latchkey has to be LARA printed as well as state printed. And so yep, we have to do both for all of those people now.
I think that's changed since.
It's brand new.
Christie Fromboys was involved in some of that, because that's fairly new, all of that coming in for us.
Yeah, that's, I was just, it used to be.
We thought it was silly that on Friday, the same people could teach the kids that, then on the 23rd, they're not allowed to teach them unless they have new fingerprints. So yeah, we thought it was silly, but yeah, it's, feels like a lot of money too.
The other piece I have is the Clark Hill bills. Clark Hill is very different than Trune, is that they have specific names of kids and people in there so that you can see the specific piece. And so if the board wishes to have the legal bills from this entire year, we'll have to spend time redacting people's names from that.
Did I ask for it?
You did.
I'm just going.
You asked for all the Clark Hill bills.
Yeah, I'm going to re-read that and maybe readjust it.
Okay, well, I have them here. I just would have to redact names and anything that gave like some personal identifying thing, because they're handling students and staff. But I did get them, but they're not ready for you.
Okay, well, hold on. Don't have the time redacting just yet. Let me, let me go back and see if I meant what I said, or said what I meant.
You said, "I would like to request copies of the invoices for legal services provided to the district. This will help me gain a clear understanding of the types of work these attorneys are performing on our behalf. Please include itemized details if available."
Okay, so I guess I didn't need the whole year, but you got it ready, so.
I just have to, we just have to find time and those, unfortunately, I don't believe that we'll have them redacted by Monday.
No, that's fine.
Okay.
I would like to see them too, but yeah, it doesn't have to be on Monday, you know, maybe by the next committee of the whole or something.
Yeah, I'd say in July or something.
What is it that you want to see? I'm not.
I'm just.
I just said, we have to redact, like we know that Clark Hill works for our students and our staff.
I'm just curious as to what types of things are going on.
Couldn't they come into your office and view them?
We should not give, because some of that student names and investigation and discipline, you're not necessarily, should be privy to all of those names and that information, so it should be blacked out. If we were in full session, etc., that might be something different, but it's really, you know, see Trune says, contact, you know, board president for information. They don't say for blah, 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 right? It's, makes it easy.
So anybody, anybody else?
No.
Okay, we're under other. This should say the release of the findings letter to Ryan Voss and I need a motion to release the findings letter.
I need that the Board of Education approve the release of the finding letter to Ryan Voss for her requested investigation.
Support?
Second.
Okay, motion to release the findings letter to Ryan Voss made by Monica, second by Heidi. Discussion?
Good. Fine, fine.
You said, um, sorry.
I know, I didn't think it said action item, but it does, let's do it.
Yeah, four hours into the meeting, we get time. I'm sure you hear my stuff.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Rattie?
Yes.
Portras?
Yes.
Beaton?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
The Fromboys?
Yes.
Hunter?
Yes. 2020, 2025, 26, MHSAA renewal.
Dr. Groupie, I guess.
Just a renewal. We do it every single year, this allows us to participate in the regional operations and organization, so it happens every.
You know, combining three and four superintendent memberships and MASB memberships, the only thing I, we do those all the time, I'm just wondering what the deadlines are on all of those. So could, by Monday, could we have deadlines on?
For the 25, 26 superintendent memberships?
And, and the MASB and the.
Usually it's June 30th, first, like MASA and MASV, but we'll get all those put on for you, absolutely. Some of my deadlines have already passed. And then I took off some of them that I, like I had a different superintendent's one, I took off a couple of them, trying to prioritize the information that we get.
They tell the dates.
Has it on there?
Yeah, the renewal dates are on.
July 10th, 2025.
Well, thanks, Mr. Becker, I didn't read that. Okay, June 30th.
Oh, they are all on there.
I read so much, I miss that. I like read till, read and read and read. Okay, well, that's fine. So those are all renewals, which is a normal, the reason I was asking is like, the request tonight is $300,000 for all these items, and I thought if those could be postponed till like July 30th and we could get a budget, so we'd have more, and I know that's kind of in the air too, but I just thought maybe it could be pushed a little bit.
We do tend to push them. Yeah, we do tend to push them and we won't pay them, but some of them have to be paid.
So, anybody have any comments or questions about two, three and four?
Wait, I just have one quick question. This says total cost of membership is $3,000 and this says now to exceed $3,300. For which one? Is it $3,000?
Well, you know why? Because I took off another conference off of there and the bottom number wasn't adjusted.
So the correct number is $3,000, not $3,300? Okay.
For which one, Debbie?
The.
Superintendent.
Superintendent for three.
Mm-hmm. I took off something. I'd taken one off before and then I took another one, like I don't need to do that. NSA was the National Superintendent Association, I removed that, just trying to narrow it down to the ones that, and then I got one for free, so.
Okay, so we're at conference, 2025 Michigan Association of Administrators of a Special Education Summer Institute, $2,250. Those are so much fun, so.
They are so much fun and I'm hoping I can get in. Unfortunately, at this time, this is usually a March registration, but I haven't registered as of yet, waiting for your approval. So there is a waitlist. We are going down in a spirit of fiscal responsibility from our typical, we take three administrators down to one. One reason for that is that unfortunately, but fortunately, Mr. Nadlock has resigned his position as of June 24th, is he has taken a directorship role for a neighboring district, which I'm very proud of him, moving into that position, so.
Do you have any questions?
Anybody?
If this, I mean, I know you said waitlist and I hope that obviously you do get in and that you are able to attend, but the, I'm guessing if the waitlist doesn't open up, then we just don't spend this money.
Exactly. I did ask my secretary to call Mace today in front. She left a message, but when she speaks to actual person, she will be tearing up. We have it all printed out.
We have good luck to her. I hope, I hope that works.
It will, Rochelle's very sweet.
She's really convincing.
And believable.
She's very convincing and believable, yes. Excellent answer.
Okay, the MASA fall conference.
Yes, this again is usually done earlier, so while I'm into the conference, I'm not into the main place where everyone is, but we've found a backup plan. So this is just, it's really important to start the year, especially in these financial times, attending these conferences, speaking with your peers and getting the current information.
Dates for workshop.
Would you like me to?
Dates for workshops, I'm thinking just every Monday through the month of July.
Well, except that I do know that my staff and I hope to go on vacation at some point in time. And so if I can explain them briefly, we need a date, we could move that one to August to bring the three people in for policy. You're going to struggle to bring them in, just like you guys went on June, that was a date people could come. Now in July, that might be difficult, we might want to pick that in August if you choose. The budget, one and budget two workshops. The first budget, we will bring our planned reductions to you about, in that time, we'll have a draft closer 25, 26, and we'll bring all the reductions that we are suggesting and then we'll give you a chance to ask some questions about those, as well as say, hey, what about these? Then the next meeting, we'll bring back the ones that you suggested with costs of what we could find and pull that together, and then we'll ask to prioritize these. How I've done this in the past, is we say, this is the first to go and we're kind of going down this list and we keep going as far as we can until we get to a balanced budget. So, and, and we'll talk through that whole process we've been talking about, so we need two dates for that. And then we don't have a committee of the whole on for July, so you can do a committee of the whole, or we can do it all at the July board meeting that's on there, if you want to sweep out, but we're all waiting on these dates, so we can all schedule our vacations this summer with our families.
So I know I'm only one person, but July 14th to the 18th, I will be gone.
I have.
Especially the 14th, because that's my birthday.
I have an open calendar, so I'm with whatever, better.
We can do different nights, I just thought that was simple. We can do different nights. I won't be back till after the 7th.
Same, I'll be gone the 7th.
So.
So that leaves us, you know.
21st is a regular meeting, right?
21st is a regular meeting. We could go the 14th and the 15th, doing those budget, one night a budget, the next night a budget, or we could.
But don't we already have the budget?
Monica's gone.
Oh, you're gone, sorry, yes, I missed that.
Wouldn't we already have the draft of budget?
Nothing. The only thing we have is our regular meeting in July.
But don't we have to file the budget by July?
It'll already be done. This is not that, this is, so the base budget, if you remember, you are meeting next Monday and you're doing this. We can't reduce some things without conversations with you guys. We need to have a conversation about where we're at, and so this is a workshop that we would have done earlier with you to try to get the budget done earlier and to have reductions in place. We're in a little bit of a stronghold, because if you need to reduce teachers, you've already renewed all their contracts. So we'll talk about the places that we're holding, which, you know, we're looking as if a teacher's retired and there's a third, third grade class, we're holding that right now, we're not putting a person in that slot, we're also.
We're going to have the budget.
You have the budget on Monday.
But then after Monday, we're going to refine the budget.
Right, because I would guess that it's not going to come out balanced.
Really fine tune it between the administration and the Board of Education.
Yes.
Over the time that it takes to do that.
Yes.
That's, I think that was.
And so we need two meetings.
Is that a better answer to your question, Heidi?
I could potentially drive back home and then go.
No, there's plenty of days in July and honestly, it would probably be better if we could do some dice, and then you can either have the policy, you're going to need to give me a couple of dates, because we've got to get three different attorney firms able to come on that day. July will be tough.
The regular meeting is actually July 28th.
July 28th.
For the regular.
Is the regular meeting, so we have all those other dates.
I thought it was the 21st.
I did too.
No, I have it 28 on my calendar.
28?
I don't want to push policy any later, so if we can get that in in July.
What's that, Heidi?
I would like to get policy done and someone picked and started working on that.
I'm, I'm going to have to share with you that we can get them in and do it, but we're not going to be able to start adopting till August, September, because you need to work through them, because we're going to be dealing with the financial situation and assignment. So I think that's fine, whatever date you pick, but we do need two financial dates to speak with you, unless you just want us to bring changes that we're doing and ask you to approve them. And we can do that at the July board meeting.
No, I don't want them done until we discuss them.
So we got to have a date, and probably two to discuss them, because if you send us on a journey to find additional information, then we've got to come back and, I mean, there's some that we've just done, but, and that has to do with staffing that we haven't filled and we didn't fill staffing this year for this purpose, but we will bring other, we'll bring those to you and then we'll also bring other suggestions and then you'll add yours and then, but we might have to go back, we'll need time to go back. So I would say two, one and a half hour meetings.
What about like, when you come back?
She comes back on the 19th, you'll be back. So anytime after the 19th.
Why do you think, I'm sorry, I missed it.
Well, I was, my busy Monday to Friday, because I figured those would be the days we would do stuff.
July the 14th to the 18th, you're gone.
So 21 and 22, what's around 21 and 22?
I'm open anytime.
It's a Monday and a Tuesday, 21 and 22, and then the regular meeting's the next week on the 28th.
And so we will not do committee of the whole?
We can do committee of the whole on that Monday too. If it's, you know, it's July, right? There can't be that.
Sure, we're not, we're here till 9:30 tonight, so.
On the 21st?
Yeah, there can't be that.
It's not over there.
You never know what we don't know yet. We don't know what we don't know.
So the 21st and 22nd?
That's fine.
Keep those.
The 28th, we haven't had a meeting in July for a couple of years because the agenda's super short, so wouldn't, couldn't it still be the same?
Would you like to see if the attorney firm can come in on the 28th?
On the 28th.
At the regular meeting, because I think Trune said it's a 15 minute presentation,[1695.73] At the regular meeting, because I think Truun said it's a 15-minute presentation, so if we have an adjust, we could have.
Sure.
This 15 minutes, 15 minutes.
Good idea.
So 21st, 22nd, 28th. 21st, 22nd, 28th.
And committee of the whole we're doing on the 21st.
Yep.
Okay. And I guess plan your vacations accordingly for us.
If they can do the 21st or the 28th, that would be.
You're voting this summer.
We could, we could ask one of them to come in, they could come in on the 21st, the 22nd, or the 28th.
Yeah, any of those days, if we can get them in.
Just get all three of them in.
Yeah.
Okay. I feel a little bit better about that.
Okay, sounds like a plan.
Hope it works out for us.
Moving on, Junior Vikings.
I would like to make a motion to remove, um, any school admin from the Junior Viking Board and their 501(c)(3). Um, and we as a board will continue to advocate for Junior Vikings and support them to help them program forward.
I support that motion, but is that our call? Yes, I guess it is, 'cause there are.
I, I feel like it's our call.
Okay.
Wait, 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 are we? Are we adding this to the?
So here's my thing. The city ballot was with us. Is someone gonna second it, so we can have a discussion?
I didn't, I didn't.
Okay, so here's my thing. When we had it under us, I was always on the board too. Right, we supported them.
Who was on the board?
Ed Klobuchar.
Oh, yes.
Wasn't he on the board?
Yes, I didn't hear who you said.
And they gave us funds. So now, we wanna remove our admin from the board, support them, and not give them funds, I mean.
Can I clarify for a moment? Um, we didn't give funds to begin with to the Junior Vikings, we were just the fiduciary, so what we gave was in kind. Right, we gave time and kind, we also supervised, we always had someone there, whether it was Jimmy or it was Chris. We're, we wouldn't, but, um, I guess I would say, could I have a clarifying questions? When we say support, are you saying in support is a way that we do the rec center, that they can use the facilities?
I know they've asked to use our facilities for games, or 7-on-7, like, that's still our support. I'm just saying, so I know that there's been a lot of community members who applied for that one board position, which I don't think anyone ever got a, on call back, 'cause I talked to one of them. Um, so maybe now we can build the community involvement with it as well, but still be there to help them. Like, I know we have spoken about them using it this weekend. Um, I still wanna support them in any way possible, although they, they do wanna use our facilities. I just think that because of a lot of things that were brought up with this, and other people had issues with things, that it's just best that we as a school district are not on the board of that.
Can I, um, the other piece that I would like to look as, as a whole, maybe in July or in August, is revisit, um, our facilities plan of rentals. Um, one way to save is to charge custodial fees to different groups, because we're paying overtime when our custodians are there. Like, this weekend, we'll have two custodians, and they're getting a paid overtime. So you could decide is, depending on how many kids you have that go to our district, you pay custodial fees, but you don't pay rental fees, like, something like that. I think this isn't just Junior Vikings, this would be for any group, I think we should relook.
I really don't think that's fair for the Junior Vikings. I just, I just don't, um, we wanted this to be a community group, and just because there's personality conflicts between the groups, I don't feel that taking that, that away from them and charging them custodial fees and rental fees and all of that.
I have to say, there's another organization in Madison Heights that pays per game on weekends to the school district that they use, like, over $600 per game. So $2,400 on one weekend to use it. We're not asking for all that, and we're, I'm not even sure she's saying Junior Vikings, she's saying in general.
Yeah, in general.
To look at her custodian, if we are paying overages, and we are trying to save money. If it is Junior Vikings, they do earn money during this by admission and things, like, I don't think it's too much to ask to say, can you pay custodial fees?
And I.
Custodial fees, I'm like.
That's it.
Well, that's what I said, that we look at different, we look at everybody that's renting. Go back and look at the renting and the usage piece, and clean up our piece a little bit to include the overtime fees that we're having to pay. That is one option that I would present to you next month, to say, listen, you know, and, and we're struggling to get people to want to come. We're, we have a hard enough time getting people to wanna be here to clean, and to wanna come then, and Rachel doesn't wanna be here 14 hours on a Saturday and Sunday. And while this one isn't, there are times that it is long, and so that, that would just be looking at overall as a, a way to save money, uh, for us in the future.
So, so what would be the in-kind, because this is a joint project, this is city and the schools, so what would be our in-kind?
I think the motion on the table is actually to remove us from that and allow the city to run it. But in-kind would be letting them to use our facilities, if that's what you choose to do, when our teams are not there.
Okay, I just, I, I didn't catch that whole motion, I'm not in favor of that at all, because it was going on three years now, that it was a joint thing together, and I think it should stay together.
I have to say to you that I, I don't believe it is in my best interest to volunteer my time to the Junior Vikings, and, um, and so perhaps you guys might come up with a different way, but, um, I need to take care of my mental health, and the treatment that I received is not appropriate for your superintendent to receive. So perhaps we could, they can redo the bylaws, for another person.
You don't have to sit, we're nobody's, you don't have to sit on their board.
It is, it's in the bylaws.
It's in their bylaws.
And I actually am the one that did the 501(c)(3) with Jimmy, and, um, and I also want to share that, um, in reflection of being gone and, and speaking with my legal counselor, who was for a board, there are certain things that are common liability to us, such as background checks when we're an organization that takes care of children, um, also hiring of coaches and things that happen. And so perhaps, um, in retrospect, when I look at this, even though it was separate, it became here together, um, I don't think it's best for your superintendent to sit on that. So maybe relooking at the bylaws, if the school district wants to do that, for somebody else.
Are we redoing our bylaws, or they're redoing?
They, uh, they're not redoing their bylaws, but they're gonna have to, because, um, I am the holder of the 501(c)(3), and the school district is, so that has to be changed, because since October, they've been holding the money there. But I, I would say, I, I would like to have a conversation with Ed Klobuchar, that I don't think that this is best for me to be a part of this.
So, uh, Tom Ostrich was on there, and I, I know it's a different position than what yours was, and you're on the 501, but why can't the new athletic person, or one of us is a liaison, one of us a liaison to the museum, one of us is liaison to youth assistants? Well, she's liaison to Promisone.
I think being the liaison would be a good idea, if they're more of directors.
Right, so I think there's, there was discussion all along to eventually move this on their own two feet, because we wanted to grow and build this. I, I'm sure we could have a liaison, and our athletic director may choose to want to come, but I, um, I'm just gonna say that right now it says superintendent, athletic director, and I, and I think that that's a very difficult piece to put in, when, um, I just think it's a very difficult situation to be in. And perhaps it's time, they're, they've been floating with the rec center without us this whole time. Um, I've got some ideas for wrestling, where they might be able to go next year. I don't think it'll be the junior high, but we have a beautiful gym, I'm kinda thinking about, but I'd like to have those conversations with them. Um, and, because the space became an issue as well for people. So I think we wanna get them in, but we've gotta get our schedules first. But I think as far as us going, the, the city's been running it, and then we support, and just like we do rec center programs.
So are we asking?
Can you read your motion again? What was your motion?
To remove Amy?
To remove school admin. So I guess I would include Jimmy.
It would be the athletic director too.
Yeah, that's, I guess that's what I meant. Because there has been, like, I, I've read so many things online, talking about, oh, I applied for it, I applied for it, no one reached out to me. Um, and I do realize that we need the community to build that up. I would love to see it stay and strive and whatever. Um, so I thought maybe this would be a great time for those community members who did apply to be able to help build it up.
I, yeah, I'd hate to see us, you know, completely separate from Junior Vikings. On the surface, when it came about what it was going to be, it sounded like, you know, great idea, you know, made perfect sense. Since then, there's been a lot of, you know, controversy around things, and it's been kind of messy, um, which is, it is what it is. Uh, but it would be nice to see it work in some form going forward, whether we're officially associated or not. But I think it would be important for us as the school, with the facilities, to be able to provide a place for these athletes to, to practice and to, within reason, where it's not affecting our student athletes and their time and their ability.
And certainly that's what we do with the rec center. They come and they sit down, um, and they develop their basketball timing of when they can use it, and that's worked around when all the sports and schedules are done together. I would foresee us doing the same thing with them. What I would say, in the bigger picture, being totally transparent, the piece around, there's two pieces. One piece is around potential custodian fees, not for Junior Vikings, for anyone, and you say what that would be, because we're paying a lot of overtime, and that is a savings that was identified by our group when I was gone, overtime on custodians, and the wear and tear on them.
So, I think, I'm sorry.
No, no, the second one is the field. Jimmy shared with me on Saturday that he had an evaluation done on the field, and it has two to three years, and I, and he said, so we should start limiting the amount of use on our field for outside activities. I shared with him, wow, when I came, they said you're supposed to be on it, like, and he said the first seven years you're on the field, and after that, you've gotta, so we're starting to have breakage and crush, so we're gonna want to limit the amount we have on that. Am I saying that they can't practice or can't play on our field? No, but what I am saying is that, um, we are nowhere close to talking about replacing that. I believe that we would be two years out for requesting a bond by the time you finish Portrait of a Graduate. You do a strategic plan, then you get a finance group to say what they want of that strategic plan. You're looking probably two years before a bond would go. So then it would be a football field is three to four years, if not five years, if it passes down the line. So I have not seen the report, I asked for a copy of that report, uh, because it became, it was a surprise to me, but then that also brings to me, as someone needing to protect our sports, because we play soccer, we play on there, we need to think about that when we're renting as a whole, which is why we also might wanna look at our rental agreement to say, um, what groups can use our football field, given the situation? Like, we might not want Detroit Catholic or whatever, or the Pals using our football fields anymore.
Yeah.
So who do we have and who don't we have?
Oh, and I think that, you know, that all makes perfect sense. So I think it'd be worthwhile to have a conversation with, uh, you know, people involved in both organizations to try and come to a consensus on what works and what is reasonable and what makes sense, you know, both financially and logistically, um, you know, your time-wise, equipment, custodial, money, all of that. I think that that is stuff that we could look into to potentially iron out, so we're, we can work together with them, but it's clear that something needs to be done.
So what's the process on time?
I, in my opinion, if the board gave that direction, I would, I had already asked for a meeting with Ed, um, this week to talk about, number one, removing my name from, in, being in charge of the 501(c)(3) and making that transition, and maybe Jimmy can help with that, or I'm sure that Melissa can help with that. Um, uh, I, I wasn't really thinking about being, I actually, I have been thinking about, it's not gonna be comfortable for me to rejoin that organization, giving some things that happened before I left, and being in those meetings, and I'm very well-suited to just be here with, um, doing what we need to do here at Hazel Park Schools. But of course, we would support them in utilizing the field and, um, but we would not send one of our individuals to supervise. We always had, um, one of the administrators on site for the Junior Vikings, and so they would be on their own, in supervising and contacting the police or the city if there was an issue on the field. And if there was a big issue, I'm two blocks away, I'd come over, but we wouldn't be there all day long.
Well, back in the day, when the Raiders wasn't involved, you didn't have an administrator with the Raiders, and they had four football teams, and the stands were full, you know.
Did they charge them?
No, I, my.
I think they did charge the custodians.
And I'm not opposed to charging them custodial, but what is the process, is, do they have to get a new 501(c)(3)?
I don't think so, I'm sure, you know what, I did a 501(c)(3) in Illinois, and we, you transfer, every year, you're supposed to give your report in, and then you transfer your officers. And so, again, I, um, had hoped to have a conversation with Ed, because it needs to not be on Hazel Park Schools, because that's not where the money and stuff's going, it's over there. So that needed, but I, um, I don't have, you know, I, I will bring to you next month some suggestions about our building rentals, as long, and, and also about, listen, not having an administrator there. I have to tell you, there's fights and things that happen with adults and parents, and so we need to give guidance when anybody rents, the expectation to contact our Hazel Park Police, which, if the rec center's running it, then the rec center can have those police people present.
Do they have access to the concession stands?
No, they do not have access to the concession stand, we would be doing concessions. So like this weekend, we're doing concessions, because you must be, have a license to go under the concession stand, and then you have, on top of that, you have the quick serve or whatever that is.
Safe serve.
Safe serve. So safe serve lets you work in there, a license lets you do that, and right now, we're still, so this board could choose to, again, um, every single sports team got money from concessions last year, including Junior Vikings football and Junior Vikings wrestling. So we could, we would still split that as this board votes to see, after we get, how much money we made this year on concessions.
So there is access to concessions, Chartwells is just running.
Chartwells would run it, and given up.
They can have that, or concession has, like, a little grow going on out there?
Again, you have to have a license, and if they had a license, um, and then you have to have safe serve. The issue is also in the, in, as you deal with food, as it was shared with Dan, and again, is that when you make items in your home, then your home has to be licensed and safe served, because you're fixing, you're making items in a, in a facility that no one's seeing and no one's overseeing for safety purposes. So that is why we did. Are there people that probably do it? Sure, they probably do. Um, is it right to be cooking your own food in your home? No, it's not, because you don't know what you're getting, and if we had a salmonella issue or anything along those lines, that would be an issue of food poisoning, so, um, we have a deal with Chartwells that they do concessions for Hazel Park.
So a great part of the members of Junior Vikings, those students are mostly Hazel Park kids, and then the, the idea was other kids would come from other districts and play, and maybe, uh, come to our schools, uh, having a good experience and making friends. So I, I don't object to, that you don't wanna be the, on the, uh, committee as an admin person. I just think we need to think how we want to help them, because we are part, it, it was a joint effort, and I thought the rec was just handling money, I didn't know, it sounds like they're handling the whole program.
They are, they've handled everything. Uh, when I was here from October on, I didn't have any input on registration or anything along those sides. I think that piece is good with them, we support them how we support the rec center. Um, and, and, um, we're not, first of all, we don't have proof yet that 50% are, are not on the team. I, they have, my understanding from Mr. Johnson, who's probably standing at the podium right now at my side, oh, don't be sitting down, is that he didn't have that information, they didn't get it when they registered, but we've had several people saying they're leaving. And, um, and so you as a board just have to decide, Junior Vikings, do you support Junior Vikings 100%, no matter what and how you're doing it? Or do you, um, because, it doesn't matter how many kids, because it's a rec center, we don't ask the rec center when they play basketball, how many kids are playing. It's an agreement, an unsung agreement that we have with the rec center.
But it's not a rec center program.
Yeah, I think we've muddied waters here, because we have the, the, when we say the rec center, we actually mean the Board of Directors of the Junior Vikings, because they are their own 501(c)(3), and I think we, like, we've, we've spouted off in a couple different directions that are conversations that need to be had going forward, when it talks about facility usage and things like that. But I, I think that the motion on the table, if I'm understanding it correctly, is just to provide the directive to, to divest any administrator of the school district as being the holder of the 501(c)(3), and a mandate that that person be on the Board of Directors. So like, all of, all of the rest of this is good conversation, but I don't think it's, it's action that's being looked at or that we're proposing to take tonight, it's just the directive to, to shift the 501(c)(3) to a different holder, and not have that be the treasurer of the Board of Directors any longer.
Well, as well as the athletic director and myself not be a part of the board of the Junior Vikings. Right, but we would still work with facilities and such, and, um, it is unfortunate, right now, we don't, and that is something that I would go and speak to Ed with, uh, and figure out how we would work that, and bring that back to you for your information. And then I do think one area we have to look at is facility rentals as a whole, and some of that cost initiatives.
I noticed something he mentioned, um, the other day, that he had called some of our board members anyways to talk about this, and basically he was asking for a place for games, and that's something that we want to do, and that's kind of what the in-kind talk was about. Um, he said that they could deal with them for practice and Loy Greenacre, so they, they've already discussed all these things. This is why more or less I brought it up, 'cause he's already said he called half of our board and talked to them about this.
I didn't know that, but, um, because I would think that the city manager and the superintendent would have a conversation, um, about that, which is why I asked to meet with him later this week.
Okay, so thank you for clarifying that, April, and I guess it's a motion, so we'll vote.
Wait, can I, I have one quick question. Are we telling them they cannot be on it, or are we telling them, I guess, we're directing them that no administration from Hazel Park can be on the, the, the Board of Directors for Junior Vikings at all? Is that we're saying, telling them they cannot do it, or we're telling them that we don't sanction it? Like, I'm trying to clarify the motion.
I'm asking that they are not on it, yes. I think there's been a lot of stuff going on, and I think it would be great to have more community involvement in it and pull that aspect from the district off, yes.
Well, I think that we're singling out Junior Vikings then, uh, which I've been accused of many times. If we're gonna make that motion, I would think it would be with all outside organizations.
So then Amy couldn't sit on the Promisone board?
Maybe clarify that in the capacity as a school employee. The Promisone board is much different, um, as you know, is that is a school organization for colleges. Um, but you certainly could say that I'm not allowed to sit on that.
If you would like me to say that it's just Dr. Coopey, then I will just say that.
Our athletic director does not wanna sit on it either.
It should be up to the. It should be up to the administrator if they choose to sit on it or not sit on it, that's all.
I think.
It's in the bylaws.
If an administrator sat on it as a family member, maybe?
Sure, if I choose to.
Like, because we do have a lot of family people who work for the district, but not as a school administrator. If they wanted to sit on it as a volunteer, yes, but it, separating the fact that it's not a school administrator in the capacity of a school administrator sitting on it.
The bylaws say.
Now it does.
Athletic Director, Superintendent, City Manager, Park Rec Director. And that is how we started it, when we collaboratively came up with this to develop a 501(c), to do a partnership. I do not believe it is in the best interest of myself to sit on that board.
Correct, and I don't think you should have to, if it's not in your best interest. I just didn't want to say that you can't, if you're choosing it. So I would like to, since we have two Junior Vikings people that want to speak, can we vote on this next week? And that way, I can hear what they have to say.
I think the question, at least, of this 501(c)(3) being out of the school district and Dr. Kupi's name needs to be voted out at least then.
I think we can vote on the directive to divest from the 501(c)(3) for sure.
Right, because that gives them time to work on it. I think the best interest of our district is to get it out of.
And then going forward, there needs to be conversations between Junior Vikings, whoever that it means.
I will still spend the time with Ed as city manager to talk about those items, but I would not attend Junior Viking meetings, nor would our Athletic Director.
Just like a cursory right now, going forward, trying to get it on the same page and understand it, try to work together.
So that might be, that might be an idea, just to remove the 501(c)(3) out of the school district name and the Superintendent not.
And the Athletic Director.
The Athletic Director. And that, I mean, it could be changed later.
Right.
You know.
I just think right now, at least, the 501(c)(3) should, the process should start.
Yeah, because I'm worried about liability. Is there liability, I don't know.
Yes.
There is, but it's in their name.
I mean, I don't know.
So I will amend it to do that we ask that the 501(c)(3) get moved out of the district name, Dr. Kupi.
I support that.
And? And bylaws.
And bylaws.
And Athletic Director.
Who supported it?
I did.
Do you all know what it is?
No, because now.
We're going to remove the 501(c)(3) from the Hazel Park School District and.
Change the bylaws.
And remove us from the bylaws.
And from the bylaws. And the Superintendent?
Yes.
Okay. Roll call, please. We're ready, right? Roll call.
Your team?
Yes.
No, Brown boys?
No.
I, I want to be, I know I'm going to be next, and I just want to be clear. The motion on the table is to provide the directive that the, the school district and any administrative agent is removed as the holder of the 501(c)(3) for the Junior Vikings, and to direct the Junior Vikings to amend their bylaws to not have the Superintendent and the Athletic Director as mandatory members.
Correct, so they can be, but like you said, they wouldn't be mandatory.
Okay. Then I will vote yes.
Yes.
Fortress?
Fox?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes. Motion carries six to one.
Oh, that was a good discussion. Public comment. We have two people. Mr. Chris Johnson? We have three minutes.
Thank you for letting me talk. Chris Johnson, 23781 Crosley. The whole point of, I'm here to talk about the Junior Vikings. I came in after I saw the.
Can you talk a little louder?
I think you just got to put it up to your, there you go.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Thank you. I came here after seeing that the Junior Vikings was put on the agenda, not having any idea what was going to be talked about. The entire purpose of the Junior Vikings program is simply to provide opportunities for kids. And I hope that the change that you guys just implemented will, that the district will continue to support the program. I'm skeptical, based off of, if you're not in it, out of sight, out of mind, kind of thing. And I am naturally, I don't, if somebody does not want to participate, they, I don't want anybody to do something that they don't want to do and is not in your mental health best interest. I understand that. I have tried to, since I'm, I am the Fox and Becker of the board, I am the newest member of the Junior Vikings board, and since I've been on, we've gone from private meetings, public meetings, we have public comment, we tried to hold them at the junior high. I have, while the Superintendent was on, I'm not going to go through the whole spiel, when she was out, how can we bring in more people? How can we bring in representatives of the district? Brought in school board president to come to a meeting. We're trying to be as transparent and open and process-following as possible. In the emails that you're copied on from me, that's all we're asking for, is what is the process? To try to get the facilities. And the process that's outlined on the website, we can't follow. It is impossible for us to follow. So we feel, a lot of times, that we're set up to fail. And I hope that that changes, because we've got over 100 people looking forward to the fall and learning lots of life lessons that sports teaches. And I hope that that can continue on. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. McGuinness.
I don't, McGuinness. I was watching this at home. I came up here because I heard you guys' comments about the Junior Vikings. I do want to bring up the Junior Vikings to you guys. The whole point of the Superintendent and the Athletic Director is to help us, who was supposed to be a combined jointment. And having two school board members was crucial to us, is to not be an outsider to get those facilities for these kids. So it doesn't get bounced around back and forth. I'm not saying that Superintendent has to do it, or whoever wants to do it, but I do think it's crucial to have a school member on the board to help us with the facilities. Like you said, there's, there's no real access to get the facilities, other than messaging and commenting, and I could tell you right now, I've been messaging since over a month for stuff, you know, to get the facilities and haven't got nothing back. So, you know, the other guys have too as well, so it is a setup for failure, I feel like. And there is a lot of bickering back and forth, yes, there is. We're not paid coaches, we're not paid staff members, board members. We're there for the kids, regardless what anyone says. I don't have to like you, you don't have to like me, but I tell you right now, I'm here for the kids. And I literally drove up here to make sure I made it in this comment enough to talk to you guys about it. The Junior Vikings is needed. Kids need something to do. We don't have a huge budget. Yeah, the city gave money, the school helped out, but we don't have what Madison Heights has. They don't have two, three fields. We don't have what they have. So we have to do a combined group. We have to work together. And I feel, I hope that decision that you guys just made does go that way, to go, to push Junior Vikings ahead, because this is your future athletes. And you're right, we haven't had a board member, but we also had two of our board members sitting out for other reasons. As our thing, we cannot just vote people on for no reason. And on top of that, we, almost closing the doors as it is as the Junior Vikings, because we don't know about the facilities, where I'm, got told by the school to call Madison to use their facilities. That's what I got told.
I want to clarify that that is not by Dr. Kupi.
It is not by you. That is correct. But that's why I'm here. The Junior Vikings needs help, we need facilities, we need to push this through for our kids.
Thank you. Do we want board member comments, or do we want to adjourn?
Well, I do have to say, I, I love seeing all the little kids play sports. There was nothing to do with that. I just felt that having the 501(c), 501(c)(3) in the district's name and Dr. Kupi's was detrimental when we are not the ones handling these anymore. So it's, no harm, no foul, I love that book you came up, because I love hearing from you. I do see how hard both of you work, so that's not taking from any of that. I just wanted it to be done in a manner that it was not on us anymore, for that part. And because, again, it's probably not in Dr. Kupi's best interest to be on it, to make it not mandatory for them to be on it, I just felt was a need. And I hope that we push forward. I want to see these kids strive. I mean, even just from last year, watching my own son go from a five-and-a-half, six-year-old playing sports, he made a huge impact last year already, so the kids love it, and I'm all for pushing to help them grow, so.
I'd just like to clarify the comment that a paid board member, I'm not a paid board member. I'm a, I, the board members get reimbursed $40 a month, and I have opted not to take a $40 reimbursement. I've not asked for that. So my services are just like they've always been for my 40 years of existence, being in the Hazel Park Schools, volunteering. And that's what I do, and that's how I am. And I do, would like to come and visit your organization, and maybe come to a couple of meetings, so maybe Ms. Hinton can tell me the dates that you have the meetings, if that would help the, you know, help you. And also the question, did we get the link fixed to be able to have other resource, you know, other emails, other than the My HPSD email to sign up for the facilities? I think that would help.
I believe that it was emailed, however, we're not doing signup at this point in time. That way, we do not have, as I shared in my emails and shared, so I want to do that as well as here, is that unfortunately, we don't have our district calendars done as we should, or do we have our athletic events, and they're seven-on-seven, and there's camps that were just given to me from the social media point. I got them off social media to put camps on our schedule. And so until I have all those dates, we can't commit. And so that was done by a secretary, which a position is we're eliminating, so that we can save money, but now that sits on Jamie and I to make sure that we're coordinating that effectively. And so I asked in the meantime for an email to occur to me with additional dates, and then I will work with food service, and I will work with Greg to try to get support. I believe they sent me, I haven't been able to be on my email today, but I think I saw it through the corner of my eye, some insurance waivers to come through, so we'll upload those. Right now, we would ask that those come to me, so that we're not overscheduling, because overscheduling was occurring. And we got to fix that. Then we will figure out a different way and put better directions on the website.
So the temporary process is directed?
The temporary process is directed to my office. Jamie and I will work on it. We're waiting for all the schedules to be completed by the Athletic Department, as well as all the summer activities, and then we will clean up the website and, and figure out how to get through. But we just, we don't, we don't want the overscheduling to occur. I mean, there's three things going on now. I also see that there's dance going on this weekend there, there's weightlifting going on there, and we have the stuff going out there on the field, so.
Thank you for the clarification.
Anyone else?
I would like to say thank you to Dr. Cost. Tomorrow's her last day. She's been a wonderful interim Superintendent for us. She's what we call, I like to call her Miss Switzerland. She stays very neutral, which is, I have a high respect for that. And you will be missed. Thank you so much for your hard work.
We're really trying to push you to the limit. But I need tomorrow, by the time you walk out of here, we could just call it a day. We're doing this for you, Dr. Cost.
I think there's a comment somewhere here. Anybody else?
We can stay 15 more minutes and make it five hours.
No.
We did send Dr. Cost off with a nice gift of HP swag, so she will be taking HP with her for quite some time, so.
Very nice. Go ahead. Adjourn?
A motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion supporter for tonight. What? Oh, hi. Well, Jessica, are you actually just going down here?